All right, I'd like to call to order our April 25th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights School Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. Mary, do the roll call, please.
Yep.
Maderas?
Here.
Patway?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Granlund?
Here.
Cool. Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Great, thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We have next our agenda approval, adjustments, and announcements, and we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Jessica, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing and then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Our announcements, May 9th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, that's today, there's a board meeting. May 16th at 5:30 PM, there is a school board work session in the community room. May 23rd, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, is a regular school board meeting in the community room, and May 29th, Monday, there is no school. Next, we have communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Time will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Do you have anybody addressing the board? We do not, so we will continue on. Next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report from April 25th of 2023 and the treasures report from January and February 2023. Hang on a motion. Hold please. Nope, that's just fine. Let me try this again. Got it, yes. Well, that would be, let me... Can I go back to the announcements since I missed a few? Please forgive me, I was running last week's meeting. Going to our announcements, just jumping back up, May 16th, I've already mentioned that there's a 5:30 PM work session, and May 23rd, there is a regular school board meeting, May 29th, no school, June 8th is the last day of school, June 8th at 7:00 PM is graduation, and June 13th is our regular school board meeting. Thank you, Dawn. Next, we have our consent agenda that we were talking about previously, which includes the personnel report of May 9th of 2023, the school board minutes from April 11th of 2023, April 18th of 2023, and April 25th of 2023, the treasures report from March of 2023, and our policy second readings for 516 student medication. Now can I get approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second.
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing and then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our discussion reports and information items. We'll start with reports from members of the board, and we will start with Mary.
Sure. I will likely leave something out, but I'm going to do my best. I, so since we last met, I attended the AMS Day meeting virtually with Superintendent Stenbik, which was really informative in talking about sort of the legislative update and what we can expect coming down. I assume that Superintendent Stenbik will probably talk a little bit more about that, possibly. Really big stuff happening, and hopeful we'll get the support that our school district needs from the legislative level. Also attended the play Leaving Iowa. It was fantastic. So lucky to have such great talent in our school. Also attended the Teacher of the Year celebration and the Career Celebration, two different nights. It was great to be able to celebrate our staff who work hard every day, and then the staff that we are saying goodbye to, but not really goodbye because Dawn's just a phone call away. I had a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik and Director Tuckrell, tour of CA today prior to the board meeting, and then, as usual, a lot of volunteering over at CA. And that's my report.
Great, thank you, Mary. Jessica?
Sure, so I also attended the spring play at the high school Leaving Iowa, and I agree the students did a fantastic job. Everyone involved with that program should be commended for their work. I also attended the Arbor Day tree planting event between the city and Valley View. They brought the kindergartners out there, and I saw Superintendent Stenbik there, and it was just a really wonderful day, and the kids all got a chance to water the tree they were planting, and it was lots of fun. I also attended the reception for our Teacher of the Year, so congratulations to Alyssa Isaacs again, and I attended the district's career celebration for retiring staff, so congratulations again to those folks on their service to Heights students. And then I also attended the final Highland PTO meeting of the year and the tour for the Board of Columbia Academy prior to this meeting. Thank you.
Jessica. Michelle?
Hello. So I headed up my Families of Color meeting this past week, well, last week, and I also attended the Teacher of the Year celebration for Alyssa Isaacs, so congratulations to her. And I also attended the retirement celebration for the retirees in the district. I missed the CA tour, which I am so sore about because I really wanted to see the middle school because I hear that Highland and Valley View are kind of the same. So when I go see the other, it'll be the same. So, kind of hate that, but I will go and see the middle school soon, hopefully, but that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Laura?
Well, let me see. I also attended Leaving Iowa, and it really, it really was an absolutely fantastic performance. I literally, I laughed and I cried. You know, it was, it felt very, it really, it really got to me. I mean, and the students are just so amazingly talented, and I really appreciate all of the hard work that goes into that. There is so much dedication that goes into putting together one of those performances in addition to all the academics. So it's just another fantastic achievement that I'm very proud of, and they should definitely be very proud of everything that they did. Then I also attended the Career Celebration. Again, it was one of those bittersweet experiences, you know, being able to, you know, celebrate all of the, all of the dedication, again, of all the staff and all the years that they that they worked with us for the benefit of our students, helping us get through meetings, you know, and heading up new programs. So it's really, really sad to see them, to see them go, but, again, it's a celebration, so I definitely wish them the best. Oh, and the chair meeting prior to this.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I attended a synchronized swimming meet. I also attended the spring play Leaving Iowa, and I want to give a shout out to the lighting and sound crew. When you have a minimalist stage set up, the lighting and the sound is such an important part, and I thought they did a fantastic job. There were some parts that startled me because of the lighting in that show, so kudos to them as well. I also attended the Career Celebration, which is my second favorite event of the year, second to graduation, but such a great time honoring some people who really have put their heart and soul into everything they do here in Heights. I attended the tour of Columbia Academy and the chair meeting just prior to this. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report and correspondence with Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to thank all of our teachers and educators for their amazing work in teaching and caring for our students. I was out in classrooms this morning and got to observe literacy instruction, and it was absolutely wonderful. Since our last board meeting, our own Dawn Hoyam was named as the Executive Assistant of the Year for the state of Minnesota, so congratulations to Dawn. Very well-deserved recognition to you. I also want to address school safety. Throughout this school year, we have had a team attending school safety trainings as part of our membership with District 916, and this June, the team will be conducting a training of approximately 35 staff leaders in our district. One of our school resource officers was also able to participate in the training with our team, and we're planning on training all staff in the fall to ensure that we're using common protocols and terminology across the district. Additionally, we're working to submit a large grant that would fund a variety of school safety measures. If we're awarded the grant, the additional funding will help to cover the costs of the training, fees for partnerships with local nonprofits, and other expenses that we incur around school safety. So just to reiterate that, school safety of our students and staff and any visitors in our, from our community in the building is a top priority. Other than that, I was able to have conversations with each and every board member, and I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Superintendent Stenbik. Next, we have our long-term facility maintenance plan for Columbia Heights with Director Hennigan.
Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Let me share my screen. Okay, hopefully, everybody's seeing that just fine. This evening, I have for information item our long-term facility maintenance, or more commonly acronym LTFM. So our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. So as I said, this is an information presentation, no governance. This will be brought to the board for action at the May 23rd meeting. So the state, for our long-term facility maintenance plan, the state has submit or give board approval and submit a 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. At the state level, when we submit that plan, they're really just looking at a snapshot of a few years. They don't look at the whole 10-year plan, and just because things can change so drastically over the 10 years, they really focus on the next couple of years as they're forecasting. So in our current plan that we'll be submitting, it's a baseline year of 2023, which is our current year, and then 2024 and 2025 is what I have here. And I'm just going to kind of go over. So this first category is the health and safety category. So it used to be a whole separate thing on its own, not involved in the long-term facility maintenance. So prior to long-term facility maintenance plans, or districts our size, bigger districts used to have this, and it wasn't, smaller districts didn't, and the long-term facility maintenance component kind of came into play, you know, six to eight years ago, I think it was 2016, but, and then when they did that, they brought health and safety component into that, and they, so we still kind of look at it separately, but it's really bundled into the same total dollars. So the first category, I want to point out, I'm not going to go through each one individually, but you can see in other hazardous materials for this next year, we increased that budget quite a bit. So every five years, we do lead and water testing and radon testing, and that falls into this category. And so for radon testing, because of our additions of the high school in North Park, we've recently done radon testing there after the additions were completed, so they won't be included in this. It'll just be Highland, Valley View, and Columbia Academy. And we do present that information to the board once we conduct those. So that's why you see a 2024 bump there. And then in 363, that, well, 352, we see a bump, and that's going to continue moving forward just because additional costs and supports from the organization that we use for our environmental health and safety management. And then the fire safety component, you'll see a bump there, and then it'll, it'll kind of trickle down back to where it is. And the big reason for that is every three years, the fire marshal comes out, and so the fire marshal will come out, and he'll find some things, plus, which is usually not too big of an uptick in a cost in that area, but we do account for just to make sure, a buffer. And then we do have curtains in all of our buildings, so it's not just the PAC, it's in our gyms at the elementary, too, and those curtains need to be fire resistant, and that, with our cloth curtains, that will only last so long, and then you have to either treat the curtain or replace the curtain, and we'll be looking at replacing the curtains at Valley View Elementary and Highland Elementary, and that'll come out of that category. So you'll see that, that in 2024, we have that 292,0520, which is quite a bit higher than the previous year, but those are the reasons why. And then the other category is where a majority of our long-term, our deferred maintenance projects come out of. And so the focus areas on this one, I look at is, you know, we'll see interior surfaces, which is our flooring mostly, and, you know, we be fairly consistent there as we're replacing flooring, whether it's older tile flooring, some of the flooring under carpet might still be asbestos flooring, and that's where that $25,000 up in health and safety for asbestos abatement comes into play. Mechanical systems, again, 2024, you'll see a bump there. So as we transition from heavier roofs, so board members that have been on the board for a little while remember, a big uptick in roofs starting in 2018. We had about a five-year plan for replacing roofs that got extended by a year just because of cost. And so after the 2025 year, then we'll see the costs in our dollar amounts or expenses in roofs go drastically down, and you'll see mechanical systems bump up. So we'll start focusing more on mechanical systems, but you can see, we're already starting to make that transition and doing more with mechanical and less with roofs. That's where our main dollars from deferred maintenance are going. And so total expense in 2023, we're seeing about a 1.35 million. We'll see a little bit of a downtick in expenses in 2024 and 2025. And from the budget presentation, those that remember our long-term facility maintenance item is, it's a negative balance budget right now. We had some larger projects, and so in the next two years, we'll look to bring that back to a positive fund balance within our long-term facility maintenance dollars. So summer, so summer 2023 main projects, Valley View roof, some district mechanical work and casework and flooring. And then 2024, we'll do that Highland roof, again, continuing with mechanical district-wide and district casework and flooring. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Hennigan. Any questions? Laura?
I just have a question about the roofs. Does that take care of all the schools, or are we still looking at any, anything else that'll need attention in the future going out past 2025?
For immediate replacement of roofs, no. That'll take care of the replacement. Maintenance on the roofs, yes. So there'll still be roof work that's continuing, but we'll definitely see a drop because we won't have to be replacing, fully replacing roofs for a hand, for five to 10 years. We predict we won't be replacing roofs, we'll be just maintaining roofs.
Can I, can I ask a follow-up question? I also noticed that we're going to have a drop in the expenditures for plumbing. All of our systems looking good now? You know, I know we had some pretty big expenses with that over at the high school.
Yes, that'll, that'll ebb and flow. In the immediate future, we're not predicting any big plumbing projects, water pipe replacements. There will be some in the, in the distance future, but right now, what our plan is, focus on finishing the replacement of the roofs, hit mechanical, and then we'll have to evaluate where we're at with our plumbing and what steps we need to take there, because we have had major pipe replacements at the high school. We've had major pipe replacements at North Park Elementary, and so, and I think we had one major pipe replaced at Highland Elementary. So some of the buildings, we haven't had major water pipes replaced, and so, and I would say out five to six years, we'll start looking at some of those and evaluating what, if anything, needs to be done with those.
Can I, of course, I might as well, since I'm on a roll here. And then we're going to start looking at the mechanical systems. Now, I know that we've replaced boilers, I mean, sorry, I'm losing my voice here. I was wondering what, what systems we're looking at for replacement as far as the mechanics are concerned.
From a mechanical standpoint, in the near future, in the next two years here, it's looking a lot at replacement of controllers and different mechanics within the units themselves, the actuators, that's actually moving parts, moving the closing and opening dampers. Some of those things are failing and causing the units not to function either properly or efficiently, and so that's just a maintenance thing moving forward that we're continuing to work on. So we're going to focus on that because we had a kind of a software upgrade about two years ago now on our mechanic, our HVAC systems that run those systems, and as we do that software upgrade and move to, you know, kind of move, move the system into the, you know, the current century of what's available, and some of those older controllers just don't work efficiently anymore. So there's a lot of them district-wide, not just five, 10, but hundreds, and so it takes a lot, it takes a lot of effort to do that, but that's kind of the next phase in that mechanical. Along the way, as units, as necessary, we'll have to replace full-size units, rooftop units, but we're hoping push those, some of those replacements off a couple of years while we get the controller parts of taken care of, and then we'll start hitting those units.
Okay.
Didn't have that. For Valley View Elementary, we looked at a project that was, without forbid, and it was significantly overpriced, and so we did not accept the bids for that. So we did push that project off as well. So there are some things that are sitting out there that, yeah, we will have to do in the near future, but at least for the next two years, that's what our plan is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica?
I just have a couple of process questions, I suppose. So the first is just, you mentioned this is a 10-year plan. Can you tell us what the, what years are encompassed within that 10-year plan? What's the duration of that?
So it's 2023 through 2033.
Okay, so we're in the first year of that plan?
Every year, that plan goes one year forward. So it's a 10-year, so like, last year, it was 2022 through 2032. This year, it's, or, I'm sorry, last year, it was, yeah, 2022 through 2032, and now it's 2033 through, or 2023 through 2033.
Poor guy.
It's a mouthful.
And then so on and so forth. So it always goes one year ahead.
So when we submit that revised plan on an annual basis, what we approve as the board is adding that, that next year onto the plan? And then are...
Yeah, and any revisions to it.
That's what I was, that was my question then. So then those dollar amounts are revised on an annual basis as well?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, not a question, but just a comment for the process moving forward. If this is an action item in May, can we make sure that we have a copy of Brian's presentation included in the packet, both for us as board members, but also for the community? And then, I guess, adjacent to that, how would we be able to access that 10-year plan as the board to be able to see what's included?
Yeah, it's, you'll be able to see, I can do that, and you'll be able to see, everything that's in there is what, for the three years that I was showing?
Sure.
Is in that plan. It's just the years out extending that you're not seeing.
Sure.
And they are, like I said, from a, I absolutely understand wanting to see the whole thing, and I could definitely show that. It's, it changes, it's, it's a snapshot in time, and, like I said at the beginning, MDE, when they're approving our plans, they're looking at the, the next two years and looking at where expenses are and any potential issues with the plan, and, and then as we have expenses, MDE does look at those expenses to ensure that they're authorized for the LTFM dollars.
Thank you. I just think it would help contextualize our discussion, especially for myself as a new board member, if I could see that, that plan. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you. Brian, we will see you at our next meeting for an action item.
Yes.
I should say Director Hennigan. And next, we're going to continue on with Director Hennigan for the Northeast Metro 916 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan.
Just give me a second here. There we go. Okay. Thank you, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. So the next presentation, similar-looking presentation on Northeast Metro 916's long facility, long-term facility maintenance plan. So again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed with our core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, aligning with our CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement. Again, it's an information presentation, no governance tonight, and it'll be brought to the May 23rd, actually 2023, school board meeting. So with Northeast Metro 916, they cannot receive these long-term or deferred maintenance dollars without board action of all the member districts. So the intermediate district has a similar long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan that they submit to MDE ultimately for approval after all of the member district boards approve that plan. And again, it's the only way that they can receive those dollars. So similar to ours, you have that category of health and safety, and then you have the larger project category. There's a couple categories, and you'll see it when you see that full-grid plan for larger projects, either over $2 million or like asbestos, and is one example of a category, if you have a project over $100,000, where you can receive some extra deferred maintenance dollars, which I have never seen 916 qualify for those, and we've only qualified once when we did the North Project for asbestos abatement. So here we have their budget proposal for this next year for the health and safety category, really no drastic changes from 916's plan. So total of 181,350 in that category, so no asbestos removal and encapsulation planned for. So you can see very similar to ours. And then for their actual deferred maintenance projects that they have on their buildings, you know, significantly smaller than, than what we have for our buildings, but, so you can see the dollar amounts that they're proposing there. Typically, you won't see much in electrical, and I don't believe that they have old enough buildings to be overly concerned or spending in plumbing, but, you know, their roof systems, obviously, just maintaining, there's low-dollar amounts, type project work. Again, probably just really maintaining with those low-dollar amounts. They do levy, or have been, or not levying, but they do receive, or they're due, requesting additional funds than what their expenses currently are planned for for the next two years, actually, three years. So they're kind of building up to some larger projects, which is something, again, that they can do, and it's just they're not, they don't have... not, they don't have the expenses to match what their, their, their plan, their revenues that they receive right now. But, just like us, that ebbs and flows a little bit. Some years, we have a, a fun balance, some years, we have a negative balance. But the whole plan is to really have as close to zero balance as possible. So, their total 10-year plan expenditures for this next year is 2,000, or $278,950. And our portion of that is 3.41%. So, it's just adjusted with our enrollment into 916 and what that percentage is. And that's spread over the 13 member districts. So, we're a total of $14,716.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Hennigan's?
Can I?
Yep.
Clarification. Does that come, because we levy for 916, is that correct, or am I remembering that incorrectly?
We do levy for 916. I shouldn't have said the word levy. I didn't mean to say the word levy. But this, this is primarily coming from, from state aid. It's just, we, we have to give them, our boards have to approve their plan, all member districts, in order for them to receive the revenue from MDE for long-term facility maintenance.
So, therefore, it's not coming out of our budget, we're just extending, okay?
Yeah.
All right. And we are very fortunate that there, there's only one building over at 916. That's, that's, I think, longer, older than 12 years. So, most of those systems have, you know, we're not worried about asbestos. And, and they were very well-built. So, they should last us quite a number of years.
Thank you, Laura. Other questions? Jessica?
Not a question, but just a similar request that we have a, a copy of this presentation made available. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Director Hennigan's. We'll see you back at the next meeting. Next, we have the school, Student School Board Representative for 2023-2024. So, we've got before us the Student School Board Representative Application. And just, it's about time, it's, it's time to get that out.
Yes.
To say, it's about time. It is time to get that out to our students. And this is something that the board decided on a year ago, and wanted to take a minute to review the application and look at a deadline date for the application. Also, so I guess I'll open it up there. I know that we, one of the areas for us to talk about as well is that we do have our current, a current student school board member who is an 11th grader. Our process did not account for a two-year term or a carryover term. So, wanted to have that conversation as well. So, any, I just want to open it up to discussion regarding the application, which we all received in our packets on Friday, and the application deadline and process. Jessica?
So, as a new member, looking at this application, just a couple of things I wanted to note. One, I really appreciate the really thoughtful application questions that are included there. I was struck by the fact that there's nothing in the application that asks for like, a specific kind of experience or experiences the students have had, which I think is, is really inclusive and allows students to kind of share that open-ended narrative about why they're interested. So, I really like those questions. I didn't have any desire to, you know, modify any of those questions. I did just want to note in the paragraph about the subcommittees, it talks about the subcommittee on community engagement and meetings being conducted virtually. And that's no longer the case. So, I just want to make sure we strike that particular sentence. So, that's all I wanted to share. I don't have any particular.
I copy, I also.
There you go. And I, I guess, I don't have any particular opinion on what the deadline should be, but maybe just a question, when was it opened last year? How long was it open for students?
Yeah. And I, and let me jump in a little bit on that, I think, from a historical perspective. I appreciate your comments regarding the open-ended kind of nature of the questions. And for Michelle, too, who's new to the board, that was very much by design. I think the board, we spent a lot of time talking about the questions. And we really wanted to hear from students that we don't necessarily always normally hear from, or students who maybe are not engaged in other ways. And we didn't want it to be like, a resume of all the things you're already involved in. It was more, we wanted to make sure that students felt like, even if they weren't involved in something already, that their voice was important. We wanted to hear that. So, that was very intentional in this application. And we, you know, the open-endedness of that was by design. So, glad that you still see a value in that. The application deadline last year was May 31st, and I think we opened it right around this time.
Couple of weeks, couple of weeks.
Yeah, yes.
So, the application was open, I believe, for a couple of weeks. And we had posters with QR codes all over the, the school, and then were able to push it out. Because last year, we did have two student school board reps. They were also able to talk to other students about the role and, and help advertise it as well. So.
Great, thank you. And then, I, well, I did have one other question. So, the application is open to 11th and 12th graders, or students going into 11th and 12th grade. But we list ninth and 10th grade as options on the form. And so, I wasn't sure, I mean, is there, are we trying to build like, a bench in the case that we didn't get 11th and 12th graders? Or is there another way to sort of cut the application off, you know, not have them?
Yeah, I think we, we did that because we wanted, like, if a ninth grader accidentally, I should say accidentally, but applied, maybe not realizing that they weren't eligible, that there was a box for them to check. And then, we were actually saying, okay, we, we were not considering that application. I think it can be done either way, where there's only the two options. But I don't.
We do talk with those students. It has happened where a younger student has, has applied. But because we had sufficient number of 11th and 12th graders, that pool to draw from. But we do go and talk with that student. And again, it's blind for the board, but on my end, I'm able to, and encourage them to, to apply in the future.
Is there logic built in so that if they answer ninth or 10th, then they're, I just would hate for a student to, to, you know, fill out a really thoughtful set of explanations about their, their application if they're not eligible?
We might be able to trigger a pop-up.
Something.
If they click nine or 10. I can learn how to do that.
Well, I was just going to say, I think, because this is so new, and we weren't sure how many applicants we were going to get, while we say, like, it is 10th or, or going into 11th and, and 12th, I think there was, there was always a possibility that like, that could actually be an opening for them. So, we didn't, I think, because we are still building it and it's so new, I think we wanted to, to be as open as possible. And again, like, we had amazing students. And it was a really hard decision for us. And I think, again, we want to make sure that we are opening that process up.
Sure.
And open, and I think we are open to the possibility of having somebody younger, even though it, it doesn't say that. Is that?
I guess my thinking was, especially at this time of year, it's so busy, and time is really short for a lot of our students and, you know, where they're directing their energy. And so, just want to make sure that if they're going to put a thoughtful application together, that it, it be considered.
Yeah, I, I do like the idea that if, if we can, if they put in a, you know, ninth or 10th, they, we can say, you know, you're not eligible.
Unless no other.
But we, I love reading those applications because, because that's, that's someone, you know, you know, a student who, at, at the very beginning of high school, is, is thinking about how they can be involved. And I want to do whatever we can to encourage that. And hopefully, that they will, you know, that they will continue applying, you know. So, I, I, I like reading those applications.
But I do, I agree with Jessica, too, that, like, we need to be mindful of the time that they're putting into this as well. Michelle?
So, I guess I have, like, two questions. So, my first one would be, what if we have, like, you know, a certain amount of applicants, and say, majority of them, or most of them, or the ones that we choose, or that get picked, choose the same subcommittee? And we don't have that, you know, that equal, you know, ratio of policy versus, you know, community engagement. So, where we can kind of spread that out. So, that's like, one part. And I guess the other part would be, have we thought about opening it up to more than just two?
Yeah, I think, so I'll answer your question first about the, you know, what they're interested in.
Yeah.
That's part of the selection process. And I think that, just from historical experience of like, last year. Last two years that we've done this, it's, we do get, we have gotten a variety, we have gotten a number of people who are like, either. But then, that is part of the conversation. It's like, oh, well, you know what, this person and this person are my top two, but they both are saying policy. But this person is my number three, and they're saying community engagement. So, it's kind of like, that's part of the conversation in terms of the selection. And then, I think, definitely open, you know, in the next year or so for conversation in terms of whether or not we expand that role, you know, what that looks like. It's not the right time right now, as we look for next year, but I think that's definitely a conversation. You know, the, the board decided on making sure that there was one on each, you know, subcommittee. That was kind of what we had planned initially.
I even have a thought of like, like, maybe there being like, one from each grade, you know, from freshman to senior. Because, you know, even freshmen coming in, like, I mean, I know they're new to the whole setting and everything, it may be a little overwhelming. But by the time, you know, they get there, or even, even if you start at like sophomore, say you have like, the, you know, sophomore to senior, give the freshman a little break to adjust, and not hit them with all that. But, you know, just give them like, some sort of say-so, because they've been there, and they kind of know what they're expecting out of their school, and what they want from their learning process. Have them have more of a say-so. I feel like in the future, that may be something that we may want to look at, too.
Yeah, I definitely think that that's worthy of a conversation. I think, you know, and what we were trying to do, and I think what's important for the board to do, is have something that's manageable.
Right.
So that we can do it well.
Yeah.
And, you know, grow from there. Right.
Yeah.
As I recall, the board discussed the possibility of, say, it's an 11th grade student starts on one policy, and then if they wanted to continue a second year, they would go on, or one committee. So, that's policy, for example. Then, on the second year, they would go to the other committee and kind of rotate. And that was, that was something, an option that the board had discussed as a possibility, too, serving on, taking turns on each one.
That brings another question for me. So, if someone does one year, say, say you have multiple applicants, right, and you have a, I mean, I don't know why I keep throwing freshman in this. Sorry. So, you have a junior who, you know, applies, and they, you know, end up getting in this role. And there's other applicants who want this opportunity, right? Would it be fair to other applicants if this person continues on, right, as a senior, right? And we don't like, extend that to other students?
Well, and I think that's exactly one of the questions we want to ask today. Because, you know, you have the application, you know, available to you, and it's on, on board book now as well. There is nothing that says in this process that if you, you know, come on as a junior, that you would, you know, be automatically selected for the next year. I think that's for, you know, right now, for this board to decide. You know, we do have a student who's a junior serving on our board. Do we, or on our, you know, as a student representative, do we say, okay, that person, you know, if you're interested, you can continue on that role? Or do we say, you know, every year, we're going to take applications for two student school board representatives? All right. We'll go with Michelle first, then, then.
A quick question. Do, because I don't know too much about the high school, do they have a, a president and vice president?
Student council.
Student council, yeah, thanks. Are they involved at all in this process, or like, with them at all? Will they be? Do we have any plans for that?
No, this has really been a, a represent, student representatives to the school board. And again, we specifically did not want to tie it in to the student council, because those students have a voice in the student council piece. Now, it could be something that at some point, the student school board representatives are having, you know, conversations, or going to, you know, report to the student council, or, you know, that sort of thing. But we intentionally made it not.
Something separate, yeah.
Yes. Mary?
Yeah. So, I think two things. Number one, my son was very disappointed to find out that relatives of current school board members are not eligible. So, you know, broke his heart. That's okay. He'll get over it. But I'm curious, have we asked our current reps about this process and what their thoughts would be changing? Yeah, this was, I knew you were going to, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
At the end of last year, which was our first go-around, I did a, I did a debrief with the students, and then reported out to the board. And so, that would be the plan, again, is to, you know, debrief with them and get their thoughts, and, and then report out. So. Yeah.
So, I guess, follow-up question, then, it was mentioned that we could look at revising the role of student board representatives in the future. It would make sense to me, then, if we're getting their feedback now at the end of the year, that if we were going to look to change that for the 24, 25 school year, that we'd maybe want to have that discussion as a board in the fall. So, we'd have plenty of time to scaffold any changes. So, I guess, we'd throw that out there as a suggestion. And then, to your question about allowing a current school, student school board representative to stay on for a second year, I think there's a balance there that we need to strike. Because on one hand, I think it's really important that we're providing multiple opportunities for students to participate. And so, the ability to have new students come in each year provides more opportunities to students to get leadership experience in that particular way. I think there's the need to balance that consideration, though, with the idea that, you know, school board participation as a student member on subcommittee is, is a, is a pretty big learning curve. I can imagine, as a high school student, that some of the procedural pieces around serving as a school board member are, can be intimidating, or a lot to, to learn. It can take time, even if you are an individual who really speaks out, and speaks out often, and generally has, you know, no qualms about, about making your voice heard. It's a different process when you're a student in a power dynamic with adults in the school board subcommittee. So, I do think it takes some time to build that, that knowledge, and also that, I guess, comfort with really participating fully and bringing yourself to the table. And I know that the student voice has been very valuable in building out our community engagement process, and also in our policies. I mean, I know specifically, there have been pieces that have been revised in policy because of the voice of the student representative. And so, I think there is some merit to allowing someone to stay on in that role for a second year, to bring sort of that first year of experience to bear on a second year of participation. And so, that's, that's kind of the balance I'm thinking of in that discussion. And, and all things being equal, I, you know, I'm of the opinion that it would be really good to provide a second year to student school board representatives who are interested in continuing on. I think two years is, is still a short amount of time to cycle students through and allow other students to serve.
Mary?
I agree. And I think it might be, in the same way we mentor teachers, it might be really nice to have a mentor as a school board rep, too, if they, if they would be amenable to that. Especially our current school board reps, who have done so much like, groundbreaking, wonderful things. And to be able to provide some guidance and check-in, just like when we had, when the student reps from around the metro and state had come here, and we heard one student say, I am the only one at her school board, or in her school district. And just, again, like, having that, that camaraderie, that, that relationship, and somebody who can take your hand, and like, I know what this is like, and I'm going to help you understand it. I think that would be really great. And I think the other pieces, I would really love to see this evolve over time until, to be able to have them join us at the table like they do in other school districts. to be able to have, um, them join us at the table like they do in other school districts and, and participate in these discussions as well. Because, um, their voice is, you know, the reason why we're all here. We want to help them and support them. And I think as a, you know, some of the, a student that's maybe been here for, it's their first year on the, the board, um, as the student rep, might be really intimidated to sit here. Whereas somebody who's been sort of through that, um, might have a little bit more comfort and be able to, to really come and say, like, well, these are our experiences and. Um, so that's my hope. I don't think that, I don't know if we are going to get there for this next school year, but I do want to, I hope that we can get there. Um, and however we can scaffold it, um, now with maybe that as a future state, I think would be really important to build in there too.
Michelle.
Um, so I guess kind of to add on to that a little bit, um, so I had an idea already, but to piggyback. Um, so I guess structurally, like if we, it can look like however we would like it to. Because, um, how close to our board are we trying to make it be? I guess is my question. Like, does it, like, is there? Is there a handbook on how we need to have our high school board look? You know what I'm saying? Like, are we creating what we want this board to look like in the high school for our representatives? And when we think representative, we think face, right? What they're going to represent. Um, so if we're, if we're choosing, um, a couple of students represent, you know, themselves, um, could we not choose them to have, um, support? Um, so if we have other applicants who may not have, um, gotten that specific representative role, could the representatives not have like support? Like, um, two or three, um, people behind them to still learn those roles? Help them with policy, help them with community engagement if they need it? Help them still learn that stuff that they may still be interested in because they still filled out those applications, still did that work and are still interested in that, that part of this. Um, but still didn't quite get there, um, kind of like a runner-up. You know, prize, I guess. Um, but still be able to be a part of that process. Um, so I don't know, I guess I'm just thinking about it and kind of thinking outside of the box and just having them still kind of have like a board without having the board. But then when it comes time to be represented, they still have those two representatives that are, you know, um, in front of people and speaking to everyone. But when they're at, at, you know, school, when they're going through everything, when they're researching and things, they still have like a committee, they still have people who they can go to to say, hey, what'd you get for this? Did you look this up? You know, and they still have people to bounce ideas off of and like, you know, go to with stuff.
Laura.
Um, so I, um, are you, are you talking about like having some sort of like a mentoring committee or?
Well, just.
I mean, like previous, because I know that, that's something that I, I, we were all very concerned about was, you know, we're, we're trying this. Um, we don't know what supports and, you know, being adults in the room, we really can't have the direct support for these students, you know? Um, and how we could, um, uh, I helped to them to, to be able to collaborate with each other, you know?
Not as much, I didn't mean that, but that's awesome.
Yeah, well, you know, it's still, it's still in the very, very early stages, you know? But I, I keep thinking that, that the experience, that losing, um, losing the experience of at least one year. It takes, it takes a good year to get used to sitting at this table.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And I would love those students to be sitting at this table with us. Um, how are we going to get to that point?
Yep.
If, um, if they, if they don't, if they don't have that, that year, year of, you know, of being able to, you know, crawl and then stand and then walk and then run. You know, and how can we get to that point?
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't know. I, I literally don't know. I'm just, I guess piggybacking here.
No, that's what I was thinking.
A couple of comments that I'd like to throw out. And one is, I, I will say, I, I got a little bit of indigestion. Um, you know.
So sorry.
No, I think, I think that these are all really great ideas. I was like, we're going to have to hire a staff member to, you know, oversee the student school board representative piece if we have. But I think these are all very valid, you know, insight. And what I would like to do for this piece, for kind of the right now, we, we either need to decide that we are going to, um, carry on with our process, with the, how we have it designed right now and, and have an application process for our new student school board representatives. One for the committee on, the subcommittee on policy, one for the subcommittee on community engagement. It, you know, or, or not. Um, and I think that, it, you know, hearing, you know, this board specifically with three new members on this board from when this was originally, um, thought of. I think what I would recommend is that we have a work session at this fall, that we discuss the student school board representative positions for the 2024, 2025 school year. Um, and, and we take that time again to do it and to do it well. Because we want anything that we're exposing our students to, to be well thought out and intentional. Um, so that they feel like they have the best experience. So I agree with, um, Jessica on that piece. I also, um, I, I fully agree with the, you know, I look at a first year board member, as I talk about, as new board members. A first year board member here at this table versus, you know, second year, third, we're, we're serving four-year terms, right? And, and each year you learn something new and do something different or have new confidences. And so I also would like to add that as a conversation, you know, to this set brainstorming sessions that we start in September or this fall. I'm not comfortable at this point in time automatically saying that if you are, you know, for our junior student school board representative, that that person would be able to be, you know, just next, supersede the application process and jump right in. Because I don't want to set that precedence because they're very well possibly could be a school. Now, we don't have that right now, but there could be a student school board representative who is not effective as a student school board representative or maybe is not continued in good standing within the school. And if we, without, uh, something specific in the application about this being a two-year term, there also isn't anything in the application or in this process about removing someone from that term. Should they not meet certain expectations or be valued, you know, member of the community or, you know, community standards? Um, and I just, so I'm, I don't want to set a precedent that we can't undo later. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So that's my only hesitation. However, should our current 11th grader choose and be interested in serving again next year, I think having them apply and, you know, of course their application would say that, you know, it would be a blind application, but they might talk about their experiences. But anyway, um, but they, that they can apply and have truly, that that person is the best fit for that position, that they would have the opportunity to serve again. Um, I'm just hesitant to make the changes now, um, if we're looking to, you know, come into our application process at this time. Mary.
Um, I absolutely agree. I think it would be very, um, I think it'd be really unfair to our students now if we're like, oh, and by the way, you're going to come back next year or, or something like that, right? Cause it's not in here and that's, that I think is really unfair on a number of levels. Um, I think we should, like, we should probably flesh this out more. And I think taking that feedback from the fall and looking at a future state, like, I think that that's really important. Um, I also, I think in terms of like approving this now, because that's kind of, we're going to be at that point. It needs to get out there in front of students so that they can apply and we have time and, um, the ability to connect with them. Um, I think the only change I would want to see for this specific application would be, I'd, um, I think you're, I think the note that we had was, you know, can we open it up to 10th graders? Um, and I think that that is something we should probably, I would be fine with that. I think the more students we can have involved and the more students that we can, um, hear their voice. Um, I think it's really important. Um, I don't want to go down to ninth graders because they are still new to the school. And since we're talking about, you know, how it takes about a year to get used to things, um, I think that what they have to say is super important. However, I think ninth graders also have a lot of learning that they are doing. And, um, I don't know at this time that having a ninth grader would be as, um, I think it would be great and helpful in some ways, but in other ways, they just maybe haven't had enough experience at the school to be able to, to share a lot. So.
I just wanted to add that, um, because we hosted the regional event and the, the, one of the reasons or the purpose behind doing that was to learn more and to learn from others. And I think that we, we gained a great deal of learning from that and will be able to be poised in the fall to have some of those discussions. Um, additionally, the, I believe the student board reps, um, are part of the principal's guiding coalition, student guiding coalition. And so, which is, um, pulls from the different leadership groups at the high school and brings them together to meet with the principal and then meets with me as well periodically. So there is kind of that built-in mechanism currently. We can always tweak it and improve it and, and, um, and I think that the board would be poised in the fall to do that with, based on the data that we gathered at the, at the regional meeting.
Michelle.
Michelle, a quick question. Um, I, I forgot to ask, um, I, I wanted to know, uh, why they had to be non-voting?
Oh, that's basically because of statute in terms of what is made up of school board members. Like, there are rules in terms of school board members. You have to be 21 years old, um, to be a school board member. You have to live within the district, um, that you're serving. So there's kind of.
You have to be elected.
You have to be elected.
Be elected, yes.
You have to be elected.
For them to be, they just can't, they can't be voted.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And it just.
Good question.
Yeah, specifically not being 21 is almost an, you know, we might have a high schooler or two that are, you know, 21, but yes.
Got it. Okay.
Jessica.
Um, so I appreciated your comments, Lauren, about, um, pushing that conversation about sort of terms or renewable terms to the fall. I just want to be clear though, that if we're putting this application out, that we're committed to a one-year term until 20, what is it? The 2024, 20, no. No, 2025, 20.
This would be for 2023, 2024.
So, yeah. Right, but the expectation we're setting for this, because the language is telling the students who are applying, this is for one year. So we'll be in this, it will be in the same situation again in the spring. We may have a conversation in fall that would say, for the next application, we want to have language about it being renewable.
So this fall, we are going to have a discussion about the next school year.
So this is for 2025. This could in theory be the applications that we would put out like this week for the 2023, 2024 school year, could be the last one-year non-renewable term. Because when we talk about this fall, we will be making any changes for the next term, which would start the fall of 2024 and then beyond. So with our.
Right. Okay.
With our working session that we're talking about doing this fall, if we make any amendments or changes to that, that would be in effect for the position that would start summer, fall of 2024.
But what I'm saying is that we're telling the students now who would serve next year, that they're committing to a one-year term. That's the expectation that we're setting to all the other applicants. So when we come around to the spring, we're, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, what I'm saying is we wouldn't be poised to renew next year either.
Saying if they're junior?
Correct.
Right, be, yeah, because they were elected or appointed, uh, selected on a one-year term. So it would be anybody that would then apply for the next, so, you know, yes. It, like, for example, if we had an 11th grader and a 12th grader, they would serve their, you know, their one-year term and could reapply, the 11th grader could reapply. Um, if we had a 10th grader, if we decided to open up to a 10th grader and then they could then reapply for their 11th grade, you know, year. And that, that term could be, uh, they could then serve again for a third year. Does that make sense? Because they would reapply under the new rules.
Right, but the, we would not, the first student that would have the opportunity to renew would be somebody who would be appointed in 24, 25.
Right, yes.
Not, not this next school year.
Correct.
But this, our current junior could reapply.
Correct.
Could reapply, right, but would not be just renewed.
Automatically, right.
Maybe under the new rules.
I mean, and that's something I think for us to consider too. And, you know, it would have to be, you know, if you are accepted and, like, would you be interested in? Because I also don't want, because two years can sound like forever. And I also don't want to lose people who are applying because it feels like too much. So I think, um.
There, yeah, there's definitely a lot to discuss.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
Regarding this, yep. So all of that, this is like.
23, 24, 25.
Conversation. Hopefully we didn't lose anybody watching online. This is a great conversation. And specifically as we look at what I'll call like the next generation of our current board, you know, coming into this and putting your stamps on, on some of the things that we're doing and growing programs and, um, valuing student voice. So this definitely is a, a great conversation. So, um, I think just providing Superintendent Stenwick direction, you know, that we move forward with this application kind of along the same timelines that we had last year, changing that the meetings are, um, conducted virtually for the subcommittee on community engagement. I think the last question then is that Member Grandlet had brought up, do we open it up to 10th graders? And I'd be fine with that.
Me, I think that's awesome.
I, I think we should.
I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I think it adds another layer of complexity to the conversation we're going to have about renewable terms. So as long as we realize that that's, you know.
Listen, that is a future.
It's all in there.
That is a future problem. Jessica. That is, that is.
And, and this is an act, is not an action item. It doesn't require a vote, it's just us having this conversation and providing direction. So I think, um, kind of the agreement here, the, kind of the, the feeling moving forward is that we're good with this application, but let's add 10th graders. And then I agree that, let's kick that can down the road a little bit, but we're not going to deal with that.
Do we need to, um, make a decision or anything on around the deadline? Or we're set on May 31st again?
It'll be similar, I'll have to look at the calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, yeah.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Because then we can get the applications in our Fri- on our Friday packets. If they're due by Wednesday, then they can come in Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I do appreciate that the questions are open-ended and also it's not a terribly long application. The kids have a lot of stuff to do in the last few weeks here, so.
Thank you all. Any other point, Michelle?
Um, really quickly, um, do we think there should be more, um, included as to like what their responsibilities would be? Or like, do you think that this will be like sufficient enough to them to like, let them know what they'll be doing? I know, like, cause like Superintendent just said, like, they, they're, it's kind of like, you know, they know what, what they're doing if, if they're applying pretty much, huh? Like, they probably wouldn't need to have too much more added to this.
We'll include as much information on the flyer that gets hung up in the posters. And then we'll recruit our current, um, board members to have conversations with students who might be interested or, you know, be available for questions. I, it, am I recalling correctly? Did the board, student board reps from the previous year have a table at the lunchroom? I feel like. I think they had a table in the lunchroom where students could come and ask them about it.
Okay. Yeah. That'll work. Thanks.
And they, they did a great job on recruitment last year.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going off the top of my head on this, but in our policies, don't we, do we have a policy that outlines the subcommittee on policy and the subcommittee on community engagement?
We do.
So if we can include those in the materials, uh, like the application packet, then they can see what those committees do.
It could be a link.
That's enormous.
Yes, a link, yes. And they're already online, so just a link to that, yeah.
I feel like maybe we should do like what they do in English class where they have the Shakespeare of what it's saying on one side and the other side is what it actually means. So we might.
Interpretation.
Yeah.
Those, those policies are relatively easy, pretty straightforward.
You would think that.
There are some.
Anything else on that?
I'm done.
Great, we will move on to our action items. And I bet, um, Director Godfrey thought that she was going to be on about a half an hour ago. But, um, we've got our, no, don't be, this is, like, it's a great conversation. Um, our first action item is the Northeast Metro 916 Agreement for Services with Director Godfrey.
Good evening Superintendent Stenwig, Chair Mueller and members of the board. On April 25th, um, I did a presentation with Coordinator Megan Andreson to talk about the services that 916 provides us here in Columbia Heights. Um, and tonight, um, this is an action item on May night to, um, to go over that agreement. And tonight, this is an action item on May night to, to go over that agreement if the board approves to sign in the agreement.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the Metro 916 Agreement for Services?
So moved.
Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion?
Thank you for providing the agreement in full for us to review. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Godfrey. Next we have Director.
Thank you very much.
Director Hennikins and Director Stunkel for the Adult Basic Education Lease Amendment, two-year lease extension.
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, Director Hennikins and I came to the school board for an information item on April 25th with the information about the lease renewal option for the Metro AB, Metro North ABE location at 4111 Central. This lease is up for renewal as of June 30th, 2023. The Fridley School District and Columbia Heights Public Schools have been reviewing lease options in the community and we recommend to extend this lease for two more years. So this evening we come to the board asking for approval of this lease.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. Can I get a motion to approve the two-year lease extension for the Adult Basic Education lease?
So moved.
Michelle, and a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Jessica.
I just wanted to note that the error in duration of the term length has been addressed, so that's been revised in the agreement.
Thank you. And I will also comment, as I have a experience in commercial real estate, that I feel like the financial aspect of this lease makes fiscal responsible sense for our district. It's not really a term, but I use it.
Sounded great.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
And, and it's, it's a very modest increase considering the rental properties and, and costs. I, I believe that they're, they're being very generous. So I do appreciate getting this worked out.
And it is a good location.
It's a, it's a great location. It, it benefits our community.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Stunkel.
Thank you.
And Director Hennikins, you popped in there. Next we'll move on to board topics. Anybody have any board topics?
I, I just have one, real quick one.
Sure.
Earlier, Mary, Mary said that, that she had a, a student that was very disappointed that, that, that they couldn't apply. I, on the other hand, have a student that's very relieved that they can't. I just thought I would put that out there, so.
I don't, I believe that children of board members are not precluded from becoming student representatives on any of our district committees, so there's lots of other options.
I will, I will pass that along, I'll leave it voiced that way.
Mary.
You didn't ask any other others?
Sorry, are there other, any other others?
Okay, so I, I had some board topics.
I do too.
Oh, okay. I thought we moved on to other others.
No, no.
She did for me, anyway, yes.
I did that for Mary.
It's a little thing. But I just wanted to say, like, we at CA today, there was almost 800 books delivered from Toys for Tots. They were delivered for our students and staff, so it's really exciting. I have heard so much and about the, how excited the kids are to come in and get those books, so it, you know, to be able to take them home, I think is gonna be even more fantastic. Because there are some like really amazing new books, yeah. And so all the schools have, so the, the books that I saw today at CA are actually, every single school is getting a package of books for the staff and for, really for students to be able to take home. So that's exciting and hopefully people who are watching at home will, you know, hear more, I'm sure, from your principal about getting those. They are really wonderful, brand new, like very appropriate books and exactly what the kids are reading now. So it's, it's really fantastic to see that. So, thank you.
Jessica.
Sure, so I just wanted to add my own thanks during Teacher Appreciation Week to all of the educators in our district and the ways that they support our students all year. I also wanted to recognize that May 5th was School Lunch Hero Day, celebrating our nutrition services employees and everything they do to feed our kids and support them in that way. So I wanted to add that. And then also as the Highland liaison, I just wanted to report on a couple of events that are happening this week. So the Highland End of Year Picnic is on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 and it should be lots of fun. We're gonna have face painters and balloon artists. There's gonna be a big inflatable slide, lots of fun, fun activities happening. So hopefully we'll have good weather. And then also tomorrow, there is a fundraiser where, that Highland is bringing back the donut truck for apple cider donuts and slushies tomorrow. So if anyone's watching and they're planning to attend the academic awards event at the high school tomorrow night, come a little bit early and support Highland. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board topics?
I have something, sorry, I was just writing that down. And I didn't know about it, so thank you.
We didn't get that when she was the PTO president at Valley View.
So I am the liaison to North Park, so they do have a few things coming up, well, a couple of things. And they will be doing their, their field day, sorry. I don't know, I'm looking at the word and couldn't say it for some reason. I think I'm just done for today. Their field day is coming up, track and field on the 18th. And later on that day, they'll be, the 3rd graders will be having their performance in Silverwood Park as Mr. Welsh came and told us about. So that'll be fun. It's from 5:00 to 7:00. And then, and there is a shuttle, so if you want to arrive early, you can get a shuttle from the parking lot to the actual performance if you don't want to drive there and park. And then North Park will be having their barbecue there, annual barbecue. It'll be on the 19th from 5:30 to 7:30. So that'll be happening and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got two items. One is that at the beginning of the meeting, I said it was April 25th meeting because I was on the wrong agenda. It is the May 9th meeting, so just so, you know, I do apologize that I was reading from the wrong agenda. Also wanted to mention that our synchronized swim team has their end of the season performance on Tuesday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM in the pool. They call it the greatest show in H2O. Our synchronized swimming team performed at state last year and placed at state the year before that. So small team, they do great things. So if anybody would like to come for the employee of the year celebration and then go catch a, it's a busy time of year.
It's on the same night?
Synchronized swimming right before our board meeting.
Where it is?
Pool right over here.
It's in, it's in like this side of the building?
Yep, down at the end.
So just walk in here and just walk down? Okay, great.
There's a pool door.
Oh, there's a door over there you can go in. Okay.
6:00 PM on the 23rd.
Got it.
Yeah, and we're, another great event that's coming up, it's always my favorite, is the Expressions over at Silverwood. That's usually a two-day event. But the public is definitely encouraged to go out there to see all the, the art projects that our students are doing. There's always performances and, you know, all the arts are represented there. And it is really an amazing event and so far, every year, the weather has been great. So, yeah, I, we've been, we've just, we've just been lucky. I think it was one year it looked like it was gonna rain, but it didn't. So it never, it never shines on our parade out there. So I definitely recommend that because next week we will have the work session, so we won't be able to talk to the public about it because it's not usually televised. So.
Any other board topics? A lot of board topics today, good work.
It's not really a board topic, but my birthday is Friday. So I'm just gonna throw that out there because, you know, when you're 30-something, no one cares. So I'm just gonna say it now.
Perfect. Happy birthday.
Thanks.
All right, and with that, we'll, we'll end on a positive note of celebrating Michelle's birthday on Friday and we will adjourn our meeting at 8:20.